Good evening, and welcome to the Brockton School Committee Meeting of Curriculum Subcommittee. Today is Tuesday, February 25th. Today it's 6:00 PM. We are at the George Ram Little Theater. I'll call this meeting to order by establishing a quorum. Mrs. Sullivan?
Yeah.
Mr. Gomes?
Here.
Mr. Vega?
Here.
Ms. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Sullivan?
Here.
And the superintendent is present, and myself as the chairman of this subcommittee, and we have established a quorum. Today's agenda is an updating status of the 9 through 12 ELA curriculum adoption in process, and I will hand the floor over to the superintendent.
Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening. So, we're very excited to give you an update on our 9 through 12 ELA curriculum adoption. As you know, as part of our DESI memorandum of understanding, but also as part of just good practice, we are always updating our curriculums to make sure that they are high-quality for our students. So, with us tonight to provide us with that update is our entire team for this project: Michelle Connors, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning for 6 through 12; Jamie Vatonas, Coordinator of ELA 9 through 12; and Matt McGee, the Instructional Resource Specialist for BHS ELA. I'd like to invite them up.
Hi, thank you. So, as you said, we're here because we wanted to update you on our selection and adoption process for the English curriculum for grades 9 through 12. We wanted to start by talking a little bit about the drivers of this selection process, primarily what we're really looking at is student achievement. And, as you can see, it's not only student achievement data in general, but our achievement gaps for certain subgroups. But then, as the superintendent mentioned, it's also some of our work with DESI. So, here's a little bit of the student achievement data. In comparison to the state, the percent that are meeting or exceeding expectations is below the state. We want to change that. Our subgroups, here's our students with disabilities who are not... The learning outcomes are showing a gap between our students with disabilities and our whole The same thing can be said about our multilingual learners. Still gaps, we have, in 2024, we had 14% meeting or exceeding expectations. We're looking to change that. Of course, it's also somewhat about our compliance. So, in the memorandum of understanding with DESI, we said that Brockton will take ambitious steps to implement strategies to ensure understanding and implementation of high-quality curriculum and instruction across the district. Specifically, we're labeled for HQIM adoption in ELA. Our Student Opportunity Act submission said, we said that we're going to formalize our curriculum and adoption and implementation work in both ELA and Science to ensure equitable access to quality educational materials. And lastly, our statewide system of support. In our work with DESI there, we said that we were going to pilot two potential HQIMs this year in '24, '25 for 9 through 12 ELA in order to identify the HQIM for adoption for next year. So, here's a brief timeline in somewhat where we are. So, last year, we established a curriculum team, and we listened to presentations from two potential vendors. Those vendors were StudySync, which is McGraw-Hill, and Carnegie Learning's Lenses on Literature. Last year, we planned for pilots in both, for both products, and this year, we began by doing a field test for both of them. Multiple teachers piloted both StudySync and Lenses on Literature. In addition, the, Matt McGee and I, the IRS and I, participated in the DEC HQIM Selection Network. We're now prepared to make a recommendation for the curriculum. Our plan for next year is to implement that adopted HQIM, provide ongoing professional development, which is going to be extremely important to our implementation, and then, as we go along, and indefinitely monitor student learning outcomes. So, the question is, what are we looking for in an effective ELA curriculum? Well, let's start with... In 2022, TNTP, which is a leading educational nonprofit, they conducted a study on how accelerated, how to accelerate learning for students in literacy. The takeaway was that we need to provide students with grade-level texts that will build their knowledge of the world. That's the key there. In fact, we know from research that building knowledge is a key element in improving literacy, regardless of a reading level. So, we broke down our key look-for's into three categories. The first is texts. We need to offer anchor texts that have grade-level complexity from the beginning. In addition, supplementary texts that also provide that background knowledge that we also said was so important. And those texts have to be engaging and culturally relevant as well. What we ask of students, the tasks, need to have some kind of coherence and connection as you go through a unit. Those activities, lessons, and assessments have to be going in the same direction, in a way that's very clear to the students and the teachers, and what the purpose is. Those tasks also have to be rigorous. They have to be aligned with grade-level standards, asking students to do things like synthesize and apply their learning. There also have to be explicit rubrics that help clarify what we want our students to be able to do, what those expectations are, and those rubrics should help us track how students are progressing towards mastery. And our third category are the supports, the built-in supports and accommodations that help us ensure equity and accessibility, especially for students with disabilities and multilingual learners. We hope to have a user-friendly digital platform as well, and ample opportunities for students to not only work on a computer or laptop, but also unplugged off a device on paper and pencil. After going through this process, our recommendation is to adopt Carnegie Lenses on Learning, and for the following reasons. The unit structure, which we'll show you in a little bit, the relevant, culturally-relevant and appropriately-complex texts, the tasks were definitely aligned with grade-level standards, and we'll also show you these, the digital scaffolds that help support students with disabilities and multilingual learners. Further, for those who piloted both products, Lenses on Literature was the choice. It was the consensus choice. It was the unanimous choice. It's backed by research. The prototype, as you'll see later, has been around for 15 years, and with research to show its effectiveness. The company itself, Carnegie, has been extremely responsive to our feedback, and they offer what we think is the best professional learning. So, let me take you a little bit through what a unit for Lenses on Literature would look like. One of the things, you'll see this in any of the 9 through 12 units. It's all set up in the same structure. And unlike some units of study, or maybe how we might have learned when we were growing up, the, this is beginning with the driving task prompt. This is the end-of-unit task that all students who are in this unit are going to end up accomplishing. And students spend time figuring out what that end product is going to be. There's then a unit launch and a reading for comprehension, so they'll read this, a complex, grade-level text for comprehension, which is going to be a challenge for them. After that, they'll have multiple opportunities to go back to that complex text. And the reason for that is because they're also getting sections on building knowledge and genre study that help them unlock that challenging text. The fifth part is, is an opport, it says synthesis. It's an opportunity for students to grapple with complex ideas from the unit, and mainly to discuss with their peers. Ultimately, it ends with a writing process. Built-in to the digital platform are several, in fact, seven, levels of scaffolded support. These look a little bit different in terms of what text you're looking at, but we'll show you some of these features. And so, depending on where a student is, we can provide supports for them, not necessarily while they're reading the complex grade-level text, because that's what we want to be, stay the same in grade level, but for all the supporting things that help them unlock When we did the first unit pilot in the fall, Carnegie brought a group of people, of researchers, in to talk with our students, our staff, and administrators to get feedback on the product. In January, Carnegie presented to our curriculum team all of the substantive modifications that they made directly as a result of those discussions with Brockton students, teachers, and administrators. Their commitment to working with us and allowing us to give feedback, and we have evidence to see that they're taking what we're giving them in terms of that feedback and making, making the product better. And that, it's an ongoing partnership that they have committed to. This last piece is the, the research. As you can see, 15 years, the prototype for this curriculum has been around for 15 years, and it's been tested and researched in larger districts like Los Angeles and New York City. You'll see 100,000-plus students, and after, after some of this research, you'll, the findings were that roughly four to nine months of additional learning were achieved per year by students who underwent this curriculum. What I'd like to do is help kind of show what all the things that I just talked about by calling up Matt McGee. He's our Instructional Resource Specialist for English at BHS, and he was one of the pilot teachers who did both, both of the two products, and he's an expert on this. So, I'm going to move up there. Thanks, everybody. Just a sec while I swap everything over there. All right. So, this screen right here, if you want to scroll to the top there, Jamie. This is from one of our Grade 9 text, Unit 3. So, if you have the Grade 9 book, you can kind of follow along on the Unit 3 section if you want. This is from Section 2.2. This is their reading to comprehend. This is the anchor text for this particular unit. In this unit, what they're doing is they're accessing "Letter from Birmingham Jail" by Dr. Martin Luther King. And right now, we have it currently set for intensive multilingual support. So, let's sit back over to Core for just a sec, just so you can kind of look at the The page layout's important, right? On the left-hand side, you're always going to get your anchor text, whatever it is that you're working with. On the left, what we liked about this vocab work is readily accessible for all students, even if the Core level. If they're seeing vocab terms they might not be familiar with, anything in blue, they can highlight over, it's going to give it for them. If they want to switch it to their native language, in the anchor text, I'm not sure if it does, that's normally, yes, they can switch over to Spanish, whichever anchor word. It's going to tell them whatever that word might be in their native tongue, helping them access the material that they might not regularly have access to. You can actually play the word in their native tongue as well, so they can hear what it sounds like in their native tongue, if, you know, if they're struggling in that particular area. The right-hand side of the page is all of the guidance that the students are working toward to try and unlock this task. So, in this particular activity for the first read, they're trying to look at how does Dr. King feel about the people, places, and events, what's he trying to accomplish, who's he trying to persuade, et cetera. Now, this text might be, I don't know if you guys have read it, it's been a while, it's, it's dense. It takes a while to get through. The, the style of writing, even from the 1960s, is vastly different than what we're used to today. And that's where the supports really come in handy. If our kids are operating at a level that's below grade level, we have supports for all of those things with Carnegie. So, Jamie, if you want to go up to Core, if you want to swap, yeah, pick moderate multilingual, that'd be great. Right on the left here, you'll start to see the differences right away. It's going to start, it's going to pause the reader at various places and ask them to, what is it that you just read? It has all of these check-ins as they go, so that they are getting at those key points that we want them to see. They can listen to them, it'll play it, it'll stop, and at each of these sections, again, they are highlighting, annotating, engaging with the texts. So, that way, as they go through the rest of it, they're unlocking what it means that the text is saying, just at this first level. And the great thing about this is this is just the first step of this. This is just the initial reading to comprehend. We're not looking at the bigger-picture ideas here. All the guiding questions, everything that they're doing here to help us annotate it, is about just unlocking that comprehension bit. Okay? From this, they move on to Section 3 and Section 4, so, of the, of the journey on lenses here, which is all about building knowledge and, and really kind of getting at what that genre is. Perfect. You're going to 3, 4? Yep. So, this next text is in Section 3, 4, which is about building knowledge. Students that might need some additional background about the Civil Rights Movement, what Martin Luther King's mission was. Maybe they are freshmen in the country, not familiar with American history the way that native, Native Americans might be. This article, you'll see, is from 2018. What they're doing here is they're taking a look at, you know, we have this mythology of who Martin Luther King was, but you know what? A whole lot of people did not like him at the time. They denounced him. And they want to build up all of that background knowledge for the students as they're accessing it, to give you some context to what Dr. King was writing about when he delivered his letter. Okay? All the CM supports are here, but one of the nice things you have up at the top, these articles that are completely unfamiliar to the students, have a variety of things. First, there's, tells you about the author, which is great, but if you scroll down a little bit, it gives you a summary of the article right from the jump. Also, you can change the language to whatever language is going to work for the students. They can get that in their native tongue as well. So, before they're even accessing this totally unfamiliar text, they can see what it is in their own tongue before they jump into it. And then, all of those CM supports that we saw with the anchor text are there for all of these building knowledge texts as well. You know, this way, no matter where they are in this progression, they're getting this very, you know, robust support for both our MLL population, as well as our students with disabilities that might need that extra support to help get at a complex grade-level text. Yeah? Uh, that's the big thing, yeah, the big thing that I hit, yeah. Thank you, Matt. So, the last thing we'd like to talk about is the importance of professional learning with regard to implementation of the HQIM. Getting back to that article that TNTP came out with in 2022, you'll see, they say, professional learning for teachers, principals, central office academic staff in those materials is crucial. We have to anchor our professional learning around supporting teachers to prepare their units and lessons, so they deeply understand the texts they're reading and the knowledge those texts should build in their students. There's a lot of, of work that has to go along with preparing teachers to implement this and students to learn as a result of that. It's, it's essential to successful implementation. Just roughly 40 English teachers will be part of the implementation and will have to receive training, and that doesn't include some of the co-teachers that will also have to be trained in this. There'll be several schools involved, not just Brockton High School. Training will be required for both building and curriculum leaders who have to support those teachers, who, who supervise those teachers. And it will include calibration of student work that will help promote equity across the implementation. What Carnegie offers are, I don't have to read this to you, but various workshops that will help with the implementation, including calibration of student work scoring, including things specifically for building leaders and district leaders to help them. Obviously, key will be the support for launching in year one for next year. There will be onsite coachings. Carnegie will bring representatives in and help us with that, that process of internalizing a unit or a lesson plan before we actually deliver. There'll be in-classroom supports, support and coaching for building and district leaders. And then, they, they'll also do data analysis for us, observing and taking notes on what they're seeing, and then coming back and providing feedback to us on, on what they're seeing. And then, lastly, there's, there's some personalized curriculum-embedded professional learning, videos, protocols, planning activities, that will help them build expertise over the course of the implementation. And, and that's it for us. So, that was a lot. So, if, if there are any questions, we're, we're happy to take them.
Thank you for that presentation. I'll open up the floor, just be cognizant of time to the members, if anybody has any questions at this time. Mrs. Sullivan, followed by Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you for the presentation.
Sure.
So, you said that the consensus choice by those who piloted was to pick this program?
Correct.
So, who was the people that piloted?
There were several English teachers at Brockton High School. We had roughly 10 teachers who were part of that curriculum team from last year and continued this year, most of them continued on this year, and part of that continuation was to be part of this pilot. And then, five of those did both, both of the two products.
Great, thank you. What did, what did we use for literature before with 9 to 12? Do we, what program were we using before this, do we know?
We didn't have a program. So, we had, there was no literature program. Well, do you remember any? I don't think, mainly teacher and department-driven. So, there may have been, you know, units that were designed in discussing things with, with other teachers, or teachers themselves kind of said, "I'm going to implement this particular unit," but there was no set curriculum program.
Okay. Mainly, I think maybe they choose novels to read.
Correct, correct, yeah. And we, yeah.
And have questions on those and, and things like that.
I think that's right, yeah, yeah. And, and one of the things we would say is that those are, that experience in one classroom may not have been the same experience as, as it was in a different classroom.
So, I lost my train of thought what I was going to say, but, okay, so the, what, you said some other schools are involved, not just Brockton High?
Yes. So, one of the pilot teachers was a member of the BVLA faculty. So, she's, and, and she teaches every single grade. So, she teaches 9 through 12, and she was able to pilot in multiple grades as well.
Okay.
So, that was helpful.
So, would we be using it at the champion, or?
I would, I, I hope to, at least in, in part, yes.
Because those are high school kids. Okay, so, the only thing that we don't know is the cost, and if we can afford it. So, I don't know if anybody can answer that, because the school committee kind of needs to know the cost and if we can afford it.
So, yes.
Because it looks like a really great program that has a lot of different operations to it, and whereas the kids can listen in their own language, it seems like some of it might be online?
Correct, yes. The, the digital part of the platform is, is an online platform, so they can access it through that, yeah.
Okay, so, that's really good, because kids that just come over from their country and they can't already, you know, can't read it in English, that's the reason why some of our scores are low, because they're not understanding it in their language. So, that will help with scores and things, you know? And I know that it came up a coup, last year or the year before, that we really needed something for literature, so this is great.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan?
Yes. Thank you for the presentation.
Sure.
The curriculum program, is that going to be digital in books as well?
Correct, yeah, that was a big selling point for us. What you see in front of you are representatives, each book represents the consumable that will be a part of the program for each student in a particular grade level. So, you'll see, the, the purple ones are in grade 9, yellow are grade 11, et cetera. So, a big part of why we liked it is because when they're reading that complex grade-level text, anchor text, right off the bat, you'll see, you'll see that in the front of each section, each unit section. There are opportunities for them to annotate online, or, or by hand, rather than strictly online. There are components, so that there, there's the ability to kind of go back and forth on a lot of these, but at least the anchor text and many of the activities are in that consumable book.
The other question was, there was no curriculum at the high school right now for literature?
There is no program. There is no program for, or, or curriculum that we purchased. It was, it was developed by teachers, where they would take, you know, unit, unit plans built around a book, rather than necessarily driven by a particular task and standards based in that sense.
It seems like a real great program, easy to follow.
Yep, we agree.
You didn't answer Judy's question, how much does it cost?
So...
So...
Anybody answer that?
So, yes, and you will actually see it as part of our budget investment plan that we are going to present next week, as well as the budget that you'll have before you next year. And yes, we definitely can afford it, and I would say that, you know, aside from personnel or educators, curriculum is the next most important thing we're spending our funds on, so we have definitely prioritized making sure that whichever program we chose, we have the ability not only to pay for the program, but for, to pay for appropriate implementation, which includes, you know, the workshops, the onsite coaching, everything. So, we want to make sure that we are implementing these curriculums with fidelity.
Am I to understand it's a secret until that budget comes out?
I just don't remember the offhand price. I don't know if you do?
I, I...
So, I...
So, the materials are, over six years, are approximately $750,000.
And I think we have 250 of it that's allotted for this, that, for part of our net school spending carryover that you will see next week.
Okay, all right. That's not bad at all. Thank you.
Awesome. Mr. Gomes, followed by Mrs. Oliver, and then, if nobody else has any questions, we'll go back to Mrs. Sullivan.
Thank you. It gave me a little excitement. I kind of want to go back to, to high school, I'm not going to lie. It's nice to see something like this. I didn't have it during my time. Some of the questions they already asked, but one other question that I have, we have two options, and this is the recommended option.
Correct.
How do those two compare?
In our opinion, the major difference was, it had to do with the supports. You saw a lot of the supports that we kind of demonstrated. That was a big sell for us, but there's a cohesion to the unit plan and, and the unit rollout that's purposeful, that we, we... that's purposeful, that we really identified as, we know, we saw research that said this is the way that we can best get literacy improved in our district. And we didn't see it as much in Studiesync. And those are kind of the two big picture differences. Anything to add, Matt?
The biggest thing, like I said, is the cohesion. Like Jamie mentioned, the, I piloted both of the programs, and a lot of the, they kind of felt like, in Studiesync, they kind of felt like shoved in activities. It was like, oh, we know we need to get this because this is one of the standards, but it didn't mesh with kind of the overall concept that was trying to be delivered. And really to help build knowledge for the students, it just, it made a lot more sense to us, at least, with the Lenses product.
Okay, no, and I completely understand that. And now I see, you know, me going to high school here and, you know, taking AEP Lit, for instance, and how things work and comparing it to this. The other thing did for the group there were the pilot group. Did we do like outcome testing and then, or something to compare with the students that were not part of the pilot program to see like the difference in performance?
Well, that's a hard, because of the, when the pilots took place, and there was an inconsistency as to which class, which sections necessarily did that, we can take a look at the STAR data, which would be our big, I guess, our biggest indicator of that. But because we, the pilot teachers did both, and there was no measure in between, you know, you wouldn't be able to necessarily pull out one, the effectiveness of one versus the other. So we, our main data is anecdotal, right? It's teachers providing feedback of what students are doing, how they're doing, and especially on those end-of-unit tasks. And, you know, I think one of the things I've seen is our winter overall, and this is not just the pilot people, but our winter STAR data seems to be stronger than our fall data. So we're making progress. I don't know how much I can say is because of the one unit. And I will say this, you know, it's meant to be a full-year program. It's meant to be kind of, instead of just like the one-time adoption, you know, any kind of pilot is going to have some problems because there's a learning curve. Teachers are learning it themselves. What I can tell you is, and what the curriculum team and I have discussed, if you look at this in three years, I think we're going to be extremely impressed. You know, one year is going to be, is going to be tough, there's going to be a lot of growing pains, and that's why that professional development is so important, right?
Thank you. One more question, and then I'll pass it on. So it's a package deal, for instance, if we get the electronic portion that comes with the books automatically, always, okay? And I'm assuming if, because we're going to get the hard copies, we have to replace those every year because new students are coming in.
Correct, yeah, so that's part of the.
Ongoing cost, okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
And also, I will say this, that one of the benefits of that is that any updates to the curriculum are just built in, we pay for them now, and then we get the benefits of those updates as we go along, so.
Sullivan?
Good evening. So far, I like it, I like the book. It's very bright and easy to read for students and just look at the pictures, especially at newcomers and different language, the choices they have. I see you have tons of different language, which is really, really great. When will the training start and how long is the training for the educators to basically be able to do all this?
It'll start, we'll, we'll start laying the groundwork this year. Once, once everything is kind of on that path, we'll definitely introduce them, have them kind of, you know, as you would with anything, you know, kind of playing with it first and seeing what it would, having teachers kind of go into the platform and seeing what it could look like. The more formal training would probably happen over the summer. You know, we'd offer several different workshops for teachers to come in and get trained on it, but that won't be, I mean, we'll be continuing that training for the next year for sure, intensively, all through, throughout the year, and then, you know, supports throughout the first, at least three years, if not four.
Also, just another last question, the writing part of this, will it be majority being completed in the laptop students doing that, or they're going to be handwritten?
They can actually, they can access the material either way. And at section six, the synthesis bit, they use a number of graphic organizers that are built into the program where they start to break down everything, where they first start by analyzing the rubric, which is in the books, that they can look at first, see what they need to do to succeed. The graphic organizers from there can be done either on paper or they can be done digitally. All of the graphic organizers that they give us, we can print out, we can create copies of if we don't want them to do it digitally. They've made, Lenses has made everything available to us on paper, so we can print a PDF, hand it to the kids, and have them do it either way. So really, we can hit the kids where they need it the most. If some kids are working better on computer, great, they can build it out that way. If other kids need something that's more tactile, we can do that, too.
That's perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vega?
This is really exciting. It's very exciting, and feels like a very intuitive tool. Is it widely used in the Commonwealth, and are there, do you know if school, if districts similar to the needs of Brockton are using it?
Yeah, so the prototype, as the research mentioned, so the prototype is basically the structure of the unit and how it rolls out. Carnegie has, it's relatively new for Carnegie, so they've only had this for a couple of years because they took that prototype and put it into their own platform. And so there's a little bit of technical work that they need to do to kind of make it, you saw, you know, how well it was working, but there's also some kind of, every once in a while, a little, little rough patches, hiccups, if you will, thank you. We do know that Bridgeport, Connecticut, it's not, it's not heavily used in Massachusetts. I would say, one of the things that, if you look at the number of schools in nine through 12 who actually have a purchased curriculum, there aren't many. It's, you could count them on one hand, probably, which does not mean it's not the right thing to do, it's just mean traditionally, I think it's, it's been the last of the departments and the grade levels or the subject matters to actually kind of buy into this, I think. Because it's, if you kind of think about it, you know, English teachers have traditionally done what kind of we've done, which is, let's teach The Great Gatsby, let's teach, you know, Moby Dick. And so I think only recently, you know, things like TNTP who come and say, it's really about this method of teaching that's so important. It's about getting your teachers rowing in the same direction so that you can have conversations about what's really working, those kinds of things. So you won't see it much in the Commonwealth. I think, my guess, is that once we do it, you'll see it more.
And I have nothing against, you know, being at the forefront of a new initiative. I just wonder if we haven't yet sealed up the deal. You know, it's been my experience that when I've adopted something at the forefront, I've been able to leverage that into, you know, the actual cost of the product. I think it's important that Carnegie will recognize the value they're getting from us in this particular situation, huge district with all sorts of need, so this is a great, you know, opportunity for them as much as it is for us.
Yeah, I think they would, I think they would agree, and I think their responsiveness to our feedback is a testament to that as well, yeah.
How does, how will this move to Carnegie support the Brockton High move to MassCor?
That's a good question. It's, so the core, this would be used in our core classes, and in English, I don't think that the move to MassCor changes too much, because it's always been a requirement for them to take four years of English, whatever the credits is for that. So it's less of a, it speaks less to the MassCor in the English department than it might in others, I think, yeah.
So, you know, we talked at the beginning about the gaps that we're seeing in student achievement, and we drilled down on students with disabilities and ELL students. It was really apparent how this could support the needs of our ELL students. Could you talk a little bit about, like, what are the things that Carnegie offers to support our students with disabilities?
Sure. Do you want to?
So the biggest thing, what we found in, is the level of supports in how they are making our students think about the information. You see a lot of those, those good practices, like chunking information into smaller chunks. So the, so the light, the moderate, and the intensive supports that they saw at the different levels, is taking that core complex task and segmenting it for the students. So they might only deal with it one chunk at a time that way. In addition to that, the tables and the manipulatives that they're working with in order to try and analyze and process that information that they're reading on their own is directly correlated to what those scaffolds are. So if the student is going back to that, that first, you know, stop and annotate, look for this, this idea, that's then what the prompt is asking them to put into their graphical organizer, so they can find their own point and kind of bring it across that way. So it's really guiding them through and really making very small manageable chunks, rather than being handed Moby Dick, as Jamie just said, and hey, here you go, and, you know, have fun, you know, chase the whale. But I think that's really the biggest strength of this program, is it makes it very small, minute, manageable chunks. And even if a student misses time, for example, even the way the activities pop up on the student end, you know, I had a student who was out for a week, and, you know, I'm like, okay, well, you missed activities three, one through three, six, and then they could then go through and work them at their own pace. In class, yeah, I went through them, and I could help them out with it, but they also have the ability to then work on it at home at their own pace with those supports, even if I'm not there with them. So I think that's really the biggest bit.
Thank you, thank you.
Let me add to that, or in academic support classes, for instance, too. So one of the other things that I think I want to, just everybody to be clear on, is that the benefit of having a curriculum is that, is the time it saves teachers as well. So when, when teachers have a curriculum that is already for them, they don't have to go online and find the supplementary texts. They don't have to spend too much time building those scaffolds because they're already built in, right? So what they can focus on is, for these specific kids and their needs, how do I match the instruction to them? That's, I think, one of the biggest things that we can say about having an HQIM is that it frees teachers up to do the things that matter, I think, yeah.
And my last thing is really more of a soapbox thing. I think we're all hearing and, you know, watching this national conversation go on about DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion. A lot of times, I think people don't understand what DEI is. The inclusive nature of the text that's chosen, in your example, you know, speaks to culturally relevant texts, people want to distort that. This is what it is. It's not anything nefarious, it's not anything that folks can't understand, it's simply about providing material that our students can apply to their lives, and because of that, immediately connect and understand and grow in their learning. So this is very exciting. Thank you both.
Thank you. Before I get to Mrs. Sullivan, I just wanted to point out one of those features where it actually pauses to make sure that the student's understanding. And I know that's totally different from having, you know, a book in front of you versus having, you know, the technology piece about it. So like Mr. Gomes said, he wish he had that, you know, I mean, we didn't have that, I mean, we were going, technology was just being introduced, but, you know, that's one of those great features, so thank you for that. Mrs. Sullivan?
So the student package is the book, and then they get the online access? Okay.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so each year, we'll need to resupply the books again?
Yeah, they, they're already, that purchase will be already made, and then they'll send a new shipment every year, yeah.
Oh, so we don't use the books over?
Yeah, we don't.
Again?
Correct, yeah, they're consumable, they'll write in them, and then they'll get new ones. Many of them may have, like we said, updates for them, so that'll be always current for us.
And that was all built into the price?
Correct.
Okay, and then, so in high school, we know a lot of English teachers teach the classics, the, like you said, Moby Dick, you know, things like, like that, I can't remember them all, but, so will it still touch upon the classics or?
Yeah, so we, there, there's less of an emphasis on those with this program, I will say that. But I would also say that there's, they have also novel study units that we would be able to have an option of implementing. There are suggested activities for reading The Great Gatsby and working through it. And so what, you know, once we, once we kind of figure this out, then we can start to think about, look, okay, what are we missing, what could we add? When, when do we want to be able to bring in some of those, you know, the typical classics that you're talking about?
Okay, so there'd still be time to, to read the classics? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That being said, Mr. Sullivan?
This Carnegie, is this the Carnegie that did the libraries all over the country? It's Carnegie curriculum?
It is, yeah. This is the, this is the, we have the math program here, so it's that company through, I think it was originally Carnegie Mellon Group, and, and the company is out of Pittsburgh, I think, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the nine-to-twelve ELA curriculum adoption process.
Motion to approve?
Motion was made by Mr. Sullivan and properly second by Mr. Gomes, show of hands. It is unanimous, it is approved. Yes, it's approved in the subcommittee, and it goes to the full committee. So with that, do we have any other business? No other business with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Sullivan, properly second by Mr. Gomes, show of hands, meaning adjourned. Let's take a quick three-minute break, and then we'll go, we'll count. Thank you.